I have only one comment tonight on the comments by myself. We, people always ask me what distinguishes our city manager from other city managers, and I'm going to tell you what does it tonight. We had a situation where every other community as well as ours ran out of rock salt sometime over the last week. And our city manager had the foresight to say, "We need to get more rock salt and we need to get it now before anybody else gets it." He put the order in, he got the rock salt. Vernon Hills and Mundalines sent a blast email communication to all their residents saying, "We're out of rock salt, there's none left, we can't get it, and you know what? Drive safer during the snow, slow down, sorry, we can't do anything more for you." That's what delineates a good city manager from a city manager who's just an average city manager. Thank you, Bob, for the work that you do for our city. That's the end of my comments.
The only comment I have, but I'm only going to look good if you ratify the purchase later. Pretty bad.
And it's a bad way to put this pressure on them, you're missing it.
How much is Vernon Hills willing to pay for it now?
Thank you very much.
How big is the credit on your credit card?
I have no report this evening.
Comments by council members? Committee reports? It's the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on any subject that we're not talking about tonight, which is nothing.
We're open.
Hearing that, we're moving on to the consent agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact of Metropolitan Chicago. Beth, do you want to talk about this at all?
Actually, Ken Leown is going to talk about it.
Ken Leown is going to talk about it, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus sponsored this particular initiative, the Greenest Region Compact. It's a very simple voluntary agreement. There are no measures of verification required, but it simply says that communities that participate are doing environmentally sound things. They target three particular priorities that are listed on the two-page attachment in your packets. One is to promote water conservation policies, which we do in several ways, including our watering restrictions ordinance. Suggest, number two, participation in electronics waste disposal programs, which we do through SWALCO. And finally, request that we participate in the Northern Illinois Energy Project Residential Lighting Program. And this involves a bonus if we sign onto this program, that we would receive free compact fluorescent light bulbs that we may distribute to our residents, which would be useful to them, and also a good promotion for the city to push on environmental issues and to show that we are trying to make a difference in this world, too. So, I would ask you to approve allowing the mayor to sign this compact, and we will move on with our light bulb program. The bulbs are, there are half a million bulbs being distributed under the program, and they're to be distributed among the communities that sign on by February 15th, to be distributed based upon population and whoever signs the compact.
Motion to approve?
This is just one item, the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
I can question, how are, how are the bulbs to be allocated within a community like Lake Forest to residents?
We don't know yet. In fact, we don't know if we'll have 100 bulbs or 300,000 bulbs. Hopefully, it'll be a manageable number, but we need to come up with a program. I've just mentioned this to Rosemary Hock the other day, so we need to work with our PR people and see how can this benefit us, and perhaps through our environmental committee. Our chairman, Mr. Cowie, also is aware of it, so he thought it was a reasonably good idea that we need to think about.
Are the aldermen going to pass them on to their garages on Saturday?
This is the aldermanic passout committee.
We're in favor of that.
Thank you, Ken.
We can handle the third ward.
We've got a big garage.
The next item on the consent agenda is to authorize the purchase of additional rock salt. And Ken Leown, you're back up again.
No problem. The, there's been a few additions to our program since the write-up in your packets, and you've mentioned this with Mr. Kylie's involvement. As of last Tuesday, we had purchased 2,730 tons of salt under our state purchasing program. This is the maximum amount we can purchase under our state bid contract, represents 130% of the basic contract amount. We were paying $41.65 per ton. Since last Tuesday morning, we've had five ice and snow events, and a total of 15 and one-half extra inches of snow. So, cumulatively, we have 47 inches of snow this winter, which is more than our 37-inch average, Lake Forest official measurement by our street supervisor. We've used an additional 485 tons of salt since the write-up was submitted to you, and we have today approximately 275 tons left. Last Thursday, late in the day, Mr. Kylie and I spoke, and he authorized the emergency purchase of 400 tons of rock salt. 400 tons is not a huge amount, but it was the only amount that we could get a quote on. We checked with four vendors and got varying prices. This is the lowest of the four prices at 59.58 per ton, or about 43% more than our state-approved price. This purchase was authorized by Mr. Kylie, it's in the works, the salt is due to arrive in several days, and we certainly do need it. This puts us more than $50,000.
Mundaline will get it.
Will be a little more than $50,000 over budget in salt and de-icing chemicals for the fiscal year, only the second time in 15 years that we've gone over budget in this area. Looking ahead, the weather services that we subscribe to predict up to seven inches of snow, four to seven inches coming in Tuesday night into Wednesday. So, we have that to deal with, we have five to six weeks of winter left. 400 tons doesn't go very far in addition to the 265, 270 that we already have. So, what we are proposing to do is, assuming you ratify this and the salt does indeed arrive, we're going to be limiting our salting, we're not in the dire straits of some of the communities that have nothing, but we're going to be very miserly, we're going to be concentrating on the priorities that we've established in the past, the main roads first, intersections second, and as salt allows, curbs, residential streets and parking lots. But at this point, we're saying we're going to withhold salt from parking lots and residential streets until we have a better sense of where we're going with the weather for the rest of the winter. We will always respond to emergencies and dire requests from residents, the police, anyone else, but we just need to really be sensible with the way we use salt, so just ask residents to drive carefully over the rest of this winter. It's not only in Lake Forest, but anywhere you go, everybody is running low on salt. The communities we talked to are telling us that, too. So, we simply ask that you ratify the purchase already made.
Can I just clarify one thing? Was my understanding we were going to ratify, but we were going to also keep attempting to secure additional loads, and so we might want to get direction from the council to continue to pursue further acquisitions?
That sounds perfect. Yes, we, at this point, none of our vendors have salt for us at any price. So, we continue to be monitoring the situation, talking to people we know, and as we hear someone has made a purchase, we will certainly pursue that, and actually, I heard a rumor this afternoon that someone had bought salt at 92 or so dollars per ton, so we just need to know where is it and is it available to us?
So, these alternatives on here, these other bids are not real bids, they're just...
They were at the time.
They were good at the time.
They're no good anymore.
No good anymore. All of these vendors say they have no salt.
And what's our storage situation? We can buy now and use it next year if we don't...
We can.
Can you store it over the summer? I was going to ask that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we can store over the summer. We have two, 300s, three, two garages that hold 300 tons of salt each. Usually, we commit one to black dirt for the summer. We also have stored salt under a tarp in the open, so both possibilities are there.
And there's always the alderman's garage.
Just two questions. One is, they have to truck all this in from Ohio? Just curious.
This particular 400 tons is being, is coming from...
Or do they have a local distribution?
It's coming from Lamont, I believe.
Oh, that's not too far, okay. Well, I was just curious if they were bringing it in. The second one is, have we thought about sand, if it, you know, for intersections or whatever? I know that used to be the plan, and I know that there's concern that it gets into drains and other things, but if it gets bad, I just think of the parking garage on Bank Lane, that it's kind of an angle sliding down there, that I hate to see cars going over the edge.
We have thought about it, but ruled it out. We tried it about 12 years ago, and sand holds moisture, as you probably know. It froze up in the augers of our trucks, causing a huge mess for us.
So, that's out.
And when we did distribute it, it plugged up the sewers, we had to mess the next number.
Right, well, I know that's the problem. So, when residents ask, "And how come you're not putting sand down?" Now, I have a reason.
Those are the two reasons.
I think we do have a backup plan, though. Ken, do you want to talk about the de-icer solution and how we might be able to use that?
Now, this is, you've seen the stripes on the road, you've also, you're also aware of the pre-wetting of salt. We mix dry salt with water, make a salt brine solution, 23% salt brine. We have tanks, saddle tanks on our trucks that mix this in with the salt before it's spread. It helps the salt not bounce off the road onto the parkways, and it gets it acting faster when it hits the road. We still have the capacity to make this brine, we have maybe 5,000 to 10,000 gallons of it on hand. We can apply that to the roads. Of course, 23% solution is not as strong as regular salt, but what we're saying is we're trying to be miserly, we're trying to spread it thin, so this would be another way to conserve the material we have.
Two questions, Ken. On a normal salting night, what's the volume that's used?
We use a low volume compared to our neighbors to do all of our routes, just an average kind of run, it's about 120 tons.
How much?
120 tons.
Oh, so what we just got would, on an average salting route, only last for three plus, three plus...
Plus the two we have, so we have sort of five snows left.
If these work out to be average, yes.
Right. My other question is, and this puts you in the position of both the proponent now and also the, one of the liaisons to the environmental committee, wasn't there some discussion a while back about finding some environmentally safer salt, so that you wouldn't have some of the problems that arise from the chemicals in the existing salt? Did that ever go anywhere?
There are products available, they're far more expensive. We use them in a bagged form in the parking structure on Bank Lane, but they're very, very costly.
More than the $90 that's being bid out there for the regular...
Yes.
Four teams. Do they work as well?
They seem to work very well.
Any other questions, Ken? Next item on the consent agenda is the authorization to purchase Deer Path Community Preschool Playground Equipment and Pour-in-Play Surface. Mary.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request the authorization for purchasing some playground equipment and surfacing materials for the Deer Path Community Preschool Playground. That was, used to be known as Kinder Haven Playground, and that playground was removed when we put the new Croya Student Union on and reconfigured a road going around the east side of the facility there off Deer Path, and so we are trying to put a playground back in place there. We went to bid this past fall for that playground, and unfortunately, some of the timing issues as well as the scope of the project resulted in our bids coming in far too high for what our budget allowed, and so at that time, the Park and Recreation Board rejected the bids and requested that we redesign it, the project, as well as take it back to bid at a timetable where we might get more companies involved in it. So, that's really what we've been looking at this past fall, was the redesign of it and preparing to go to bid here for the spring so that we could construct the playground and get it completed prior to the end of the school year for the current students that are in our program, as well as the fact we have a grant that's involved with this project, and they did give us an extension till June to finish the project, but it was a substantial grant that Karen May assisted us in getting, and it's a $75,000 component of the funding of this particular grant. The redesign did involve our Kinder Haven parents as well as staff, and the Park and Recreation Board did review the redesign plan, too, as part of this process. We do have the money and the budget currently for the project this spring, primarily in the Park and Public Land Fund. We have $50,000 set aside from a special recreation tax levy because of the ADA aspects we'll have in the project, and then the remaining portion was the grant, so that's a good aspect of it. As part of our research and redesigning, we did come across a program called U.S. Communities, and it is a national collaborative purchasing program, and they go out and bid top, like playground equipment, office supply, those kinds of things, and then they give a flat bid price that you can utilize throughout the year if you place orders directly through them. So, we did look at doing that, and luckily, the company that's equipment we would like to use are vendor of this particular program, and so we were looking at purchasing directly to do a cost savings for the city, and it's about 6%. It may actually be a little bit more because we're still fine-tuning a few of the items and the, we might actually save an additional amount of money from that. But we're fine-tuning the order now, but the max is what you've seen in front of you as far as the playground equipment portion. The additional aspect that's really helpful for us is that by us direct purchasing it, we will gain four to six weeks in our construction schedule, because instead of waiting until our contractors onboard and they place the order and then wait for the equipment to come in and then start the project, we can place the order now, and it comes into us, and as soon as the bid is awarded then, we can get the contractor, he can start to mobilize and determine when he can get in there and start the construction weather, you know, allowing us to do that. So, there's two benefits to using this U.S. Communities program. So, basically, what I was asking was to have approval to do the direct purchase, which is a total dollar amount here tonight of $90,785, broken down into the playground equipment purchase of $63,425, and then the surfacing materials, which is $27,360. And the surfacing materials, just to let you know, is a product that we don't have much throughout the system in the Park and Rec system. We do have it down at the beach, and it's a poured-in-place rubberized surface. It's really the superior product to put down in a playground now. It does make it more ADA accessible, which is a goal that we do have with this particular program because of special rec funds being used for it and our grant that we have. So, this will allow us to have underneath all the significant components of the playground, play pieces, a poured-in-place surface, which would be very nice to incorporate in this project. Any questions?
Mary, I just have a general question. The old Kinder Haven Playground was a great place for siblings that weren't playing baseball or soccer, could run over, and parents could kind of see them. I saw the fence, which makes sense, you've got to obviously have that fence. Will you still have public access at nighttime and on the weekends for people to still use it that are not part of Kinder Haven?
Yes, it'll be an open playground, so it's just a gate, it's open at any time, and the roadway, actually having a roadway now around the east side, and you can park right there, I think will really make it even more useful, instead of having to walk through the recreation center to get out to the playground and stuff. So, it actually will have, I think, a lot more use than it's had in the past. It'll be really a community playground.
Great.
Mary, I feel like the cost of these playgrounds goes up every budget year. Is this one just more extensive, or are they just getting more expensive? Is they have to be more ADA certified and, you know, the equipment gets safer?
You know, I think it's an interesting question. I can't really speak to past playground prices because that wasn't really an area that I focused on in my previous positions, but, you know, I think that we are seeing with the playground pieces, the ADA requirements for the number of ground level and elevated pieces has changed. You are also required to try to do some aspects to the playground that gives a real wide variety for all, more age groups, and that is something here that we were trying to accommodate, so if they brought a sibling, it wasn't just a preschool playground, but that we'll do tots all the way up through really about six years of age at this particular playground. So, it does add up with the playground equipment, but that's what they're coming for.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mary, before you go, you want to tell us the other piece of good news on Route 60?
Congratulations on your grant.
There we go.
Thank you. Yes. Actually, I have a couple of good pieces of information. Actually, I have three, but one of them's personal to me. But I won a Super Bowl full this weekend, so I was quite excited. But the, we did get two great pieces of news this past week. One was that we were selected to be one of the grant recipients from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for a $400,000 matching grant for Route 60 project, and as you know, that's a third of our budget for the remaining portion, so we were really excited about that, and I can't thank Senator Garrett enough for her support, that she lent towards that project, as well as, you know, the fact that our community, the fact it was a community park really helped us in getting the grant. So, excited about that. The official dotting the i's and crossing the t's notice isn't in our hands, per se, but, so, once that's here, we will be doing a community news release on that. So, that was one piece of great news. The other one was, we've been looking at trying to put together some master plans for certain parks, and I did do a presentation to the Lake Forest Garden Club two weeks or three weeks ago, and they have indicated they are interested in funding that master plan, as well as participating, possibly participating and doing some of the improvements that might be determined out of that master plan process as a gift to the city as part of the centennial. So, that was quite a banner start to my week last week, so it was a very good week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item on the consent agenda is the approval of the authorized invoices and payrolls.
All right. I'm thinking that maybe you cross me up tonight with what's written here, but I'm going to check it, because we have, during the month of December, don't we mean January?
No.
No, we mean December?
We're in February.
I thought we already approved December.
Kathy Reiner.
Kathy?
This should be January.
Okay. So, during the, so, when the approval of authorized invoices and payrolls for January totaling, totaling $3,443,936.84, and then we also need a motion for...
February.
To pay for treasurer's warrants for treasurer's checks in...
The month of February.
For the month of February. Okay, I'm just, that's usually written here, too. You're really crossing me up this evening.
You can tell that Beth Marquez was on vacation.
I'm reading carefully.
That is the end of the consent agenda. Any comments?
Motion for approval?
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthell.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. An ordinance we have none, new business we have none. Any additional items for the council to discuss? I just have one. Tomorrow's election day, it is your obligation to go out and vote. I know that there is a national election going on, but we also have four aldermen within this city that are going to be elected tomorrow, so I would appreciate people going out to vote. I know we have a great pre-voting, but remember to vote tomorrow. On that note...
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. We're back into the committee of the whole, and I am going to ask Tom Morse, ask questions.
Okay. Let me go through my packet here. I thought, by the way, I think I agree with the mayor and some of my fellow aldermen. I thought the packet was very informative and well-done, so thank you very much, Ken and Ramesh and the others that worked hard on it. I appreciate it. I know we had a lot of discussion around streetlights, and I know that the area, there's quite a concern along Western from safety and aesthetic standpoints. Have we settled on a type of streetlight? I mean, I know we've, in the past, we've thought about LEDs and things like that, and I just am wondering, is that something that we're going towards?
Well, I don't know if you've picked out the exact fixture. I think we're really right now just looking at the locations and the fixtures were something we were going to bring before the building review board, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ramesh, or Tim, or John.
Yeah, I don't think we fixed the, the fixtures are not fixed yet, those are still to be discussed. I think we're going to still go back to the, either the focus group or come back to you with the particular design, but the illumination and all that, that's, we had a lighting consultant, and so that's taken care of, but the exact fixture design, that's still up in there.
Let's not put them at Triangle Park, nobody knew what Triangle Park was, to go find out what the fixtures were.
They won't be gas either, will they? No gas.
That's guaranteed.
What we will do is, we will narrow it down to two, and we will bring the two to you, so you can actually see them.
There we go.
Thank you. In terms of the storm sewer upgrades, I know we've had a lot of, in this area, we've had a lot of residents' complaints, and many of them are curious of whether or not the improvements to the storm sewers in and around the woodland western area is going to improve, especially relative to Atheridge and some of the other locations, because everything drains from north and west at that point.
That is correct. This, all the storm sewer improvements you're seeing was part of the study done, done in like 2000, so, and they, the design did take into the 10-year storm event, so if you look at the drawings, some of the sewers are going like two to three pipe sizes high, from 18 to like 24, and from 18 to like 36. So, this will address what we call is the immediate storm event, which is a 10-year rain events, and we'll have a provision for overland flow which our streets will handle. So, those storm sewer designs were part of the broad study which was done earlier.
Okay, great. In terms of the, could you explain to me, number eight was a discussion of traffic lights and cabinet upgrades, it seems expensive for...
Our street section, we have like the two traffic lights, one at Illinois and the one at McKinley. Ever since it was installed, we have been putting off doing any maintenance to it, and when our, when we were doing this project, our street section personnel, they came and asked and said that, you know, we need to upgrade this, and they don't want to keep putting in money just to maintain it, and we thought that since we are going to tear up the infrastructure, this is a good time to do. So, we are going to get new cabinets, and I think one of the main reasons is, right now, I think if they shut off, I'm trying to remember, if they shut off the whole box, the street lights and the traffic signals goes away. So, they want to segregate that so that you can isolate different section, and this, with this new infrastructure upgrade, we plan to do that so that they can isolate different problem areas.
All right. And Bob, I don't know, you were kind of getting there, and you never got to the train station. It would be help, I had a number of questions about that, both in terms of a similar question, similar comment to what the focus group came up with, which was those, what they called ears.
Right.
Sticking out, those ears look big.
Right.
And they look like they will impede traffic and squeeze it down to one lane at many intersections where, in fact, you do at certain periods are able to get two cars, one turning right, one going forward, or one turning left, and one going right or straight ahead. And I would refer to both the corners of Western and Westminster and Deer Path in Illinois where effectively, even on a casual basis, cars may be able to get around people a lot easier. Those ears seem to really kind of squeeze in and limit vehicular traffic, and we already don't have capacity on the roadway, and I really would not want to see those impact the roadway capacity. So, I was a little concerned, and maybe it's the diagrams, the way they are here, but...
Well, Ramesh, why don't you start with the intersection of Westminster and Western, and we'll start there first, because that was a good point, and it was something the staff did talk about, to make sure that you could still get multiple vehicles through the intersection.
To get back to you, Alderman Morse, I think there's two issues. One was the Market Square, which was looked carefully by the focus group, and the high intersection, which we call the high-volume intersection, which is the Westminster and Deer Path, was looked by our team, and as through our Public Works meeting and through the open house, it was apparent that we need to have some provisions, one for the loading zone, and also provisions for traffic to make a right. So, if you look at the new design at Deer Path and Westminster, we're going to have a right-turn lane so that people trying to go west can make those turns, and then the people who want to go left or straight with the stop sign, they can have a lane there.
Is this, is this Deer Path and Western?
No, Westminster and Deer Path.
Westminster, right, yeah.
And Western, right?
Probably the same on Deer.
Is that Deer Path and Western?
No, it's like a typical intersection, this is what you're going to see.
Well, there's only, they're not typical, there's only a couple, and they're all different right now.
I think he's, it's Western and Westminster.
Westminster.
Okay. My point here on this one would be, do you, effectively, there's eastbound traffic, you can load two cars on the eastbound lane right now, and what I was concerned about is looking, just, and maybe it's the visuals here.
It looks...
It looks as though you're not going to put three cars across that you can put across right now. You could have, right now, effectively, you have a car coming westbound and two going eastbound. You really do. There's, and there's a lot of right-hand turn movements here, because people are going around Market Square, and that's what I was concerned about, is are we taking capacity away there? It's a high-volume turn, it would be, seemed to me.
What you see here at these two intersections, we are going to soften those radiuses. That was brought up at the Public Works Committee, that it is important that the right-turn lane, that we don't put this, what you call the ears, so stick high so that people can't make the right-turn lane, yes. So, those are going to be softened, and those curves are like, what we call is the depressed curves. Those are not, what we call is the barrier curves. Those are going to be depressed, so people can, cars can drive over those curves to make the turn, so those are what those are depressed curves, those are. So those are what does the depressed curbs, those are.
But I think, I think this is an important point to clarify, because, um, I think you're correct. Right now, if this is a parking space, if I, once I get around that parked car, I can get over here and take a right-hand turn. On, if I'm going Westminster and I wanna go southbound on Western, right?
Yes. Well, that happens there. It happens in a number of places where we have loading zones. Uh, it happens in front of Walgreens.
Right.
We have a whole, you know, I wonder why we have so much open, non-utilized. It's a very domain, high demand for parking, and we don't have parking for a, a long stretch of it.
Right, but I think that here's, I think the, the critical point, and this is where we'll need direction, is that here, it has been necked down, so, so you can see, there's the lane right now, and it's necked down to reduce the, uh, amount of distance that the pedestrian has to go across. So in this scenario, you would not be able to accomplish what you're saying, because you would only have one car coming up here to go eastbound, and they'd either go straight, right, or left turn.
Which means when the train is all the way down and got Deer Path and Westminster both blocked, you basically stopped all that traffic in downtown.
People are gonna be bad, Tom. That, that was my concern. I mean, we do, you know, the, regardless, I mean, I, I recognize the fact that some of this, and I, I guess I should start by saying I'm highly supportive of all the infrastructure improvements. I think that when it gets into some of these aesthetic things, where we start doing these bump outs and things, I'm not frankly as convinced that those are adding that much value necessarily.
But clearly, from a safety point of view, where you run into trouble on the safety point of view with people crossing the street is when you have the three cars across. So if you cut it to two lanes and shorten the crosswalk in half, it's gonna be a lot safer. Because a lot of times what happens is, someone comes up on the right, and they don't see the pedestrian coming up. So I, I think there is a trade-off there, and I'm, I'm not sure which way we wanna go on it, but I think, you know, we have to recognize that if you put the bump out in, you do make it a lot safer for the pedestrians.
I don't disagree with you, and I, I think that's what we are trying to balance. I just, it seems that we're, we have very limited roadway capacity though as well, and we have a lot of vehicular demand in this area during the day. I mean, it's incredible amount of demand, and we need a, if we're gonna create additional bottlenecks, for lack of a better word here, of cars trying to get in and around the downtown, that's not gonna do any good for the businesses either.
And the trains cause a huge issue.
So, and I, I like the way that you softened it up at the entrance to, to Market Square, and I'm not saying eliminate them, I'm just saying maybe soften them up a little bit, so they don't stick out quite, I mean, they're not, I, I didn't, they don't, I've seen them in different towns, they don't look compellingly attractive to me. I mean, our, our design theme, if we build it off of Market Square, would be more squared off. And, you know, we don't, we don't, you know, this is not a town in Arizona, once you leave Market Square, a brand-new city with brand-new curbs, and, you know, we can make it look aesthetically consistent, and I'd love you to address this issue if you could.
We did take a close look, especially at Deer Path and Westminster, and there had the opportunity to provide, um, the right turn lane clearly, um, and, and those you see. We can take a look at the, the side streets as well, and, um, review the, the movement count, and determine what kind of level of, uh, service would be provided with a, with a lane there and without a lane there, to kind of get a tangible idea of what that would be. If the level of service is, you know, a D or an F, and then obviously we'd wanna take a look and try to get some other measures, uh, for the side streets as well. But that definitely can be looked at, and that's a good point. What I have here is, uh, a comparison, the red lines, unfortunately, the, uh...
This is Deer Path, then?
This is Deer Path. Uh, okay. Um, yeah, this is Deer Path, and the red lines are the existing pavement marking, and right there you can see that the, um, uh, on this side, there's the, the loading zone, which is just basically an angle in the pavement marking, and that's what's being used right now.
Can somebody give me some background on the loading zone? Why we even, why are we using up all that space in front of Walgreens for a loading zone?
Because there's no place to load and unload, and when Market Square was changed, and it was closed in the back there where the, the Art League is, that used to be the loading and unloading for the stores on Deer Path and Western. And when they closed that area off and made it a pedestrian walkway, they no longer could load in and out, and we had to establish the loading.
Can we just mandate loading be done off hours?
I don't think you can do that, because I don't think you're gonna, I think you're gonna lose...
I mean, it's a big trade-off there.
I think it, I think it is...
They don't come then.
You know, I, frankly, I don't, you know, I, I think that this council...
It's a lot of valuable real...
I think the council can add...
How about having a no parking between nine and five there?
No loading.
No loading.
No parking. You can park there at other times, but the loading would be there during the day.
Oh.
No, you would want the opposite.
I thought it'd be just the opposite.
Why we did this?
Load five to nine.
Let them park during the day when they need to, and let them load.
But there'd be no place to load during the day then.
I mean, there's no place to load all along Deer Path Road either for all, for the businesses that are there, and the offices that are upstairs. There's a lot of items that come, FedEx, United Parcel, as well as the, uh, the beer trucks for the wine and cheese and Walgreens. So they stage there.
The, anything that's, that can't get into a regular parking place, that's gonna be on the south end of Market Square, pulls into that location, and it's full. They're in and out of there all day long.
Okay.
There is a twofold benefit, because the, uh, the, the loading zone is parallel to the right turn lane, and they both fit within the area of the diagonal parking, and essentially there is no parking loss, because this is where it ends right now.
Right.
So it, it does work out pretty well in this, in this...
I was thinking about parking gain, not, not staying the same. Okay. So I did, I interrupt you on your lines. I'd like to hear your, your issue on your lines.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, so the, the red line is the, the existing stop bar right now, and, um, and then there's this, this area in here, which is the diagonal zone that's used for the, the existing loading zone, and it essentially is the same as what's under the proposed condition for this, this configuration. We brought the curb back in through here to make sure that a, um, a WB40 truck, basically a, a delivery semi-truck, could fit within that area, and then turn out of that area without having to go into any opposing lanes. And so that was the, a treatment that we used at this intersection, also at Westminster. It's a little bit different, but very similar in nature, and, uh, and opened up the, this area right in here at all intersections to 16 feet, um, to, to allow for a, a vehicle to possibly get by there, but not at any, um, you know, high speed or anything like that, just enough to kind of, to get by if necessary.
I, I don't, you know, I, I apologize. I, I really sometimes don't think this is the right venue to kind of air a lot of this stuff. I think though we add a lot of wisdom, and certainly no one adds more wisdom than you Tom. Honestly, but, but...
I asked the question beforehand, when would be the appropriate time to have these questions answered?
No, I think we could do this all day, because I think that you're, you're right in many ways, that this, this is, this can be a nightmare. You can imagine that, that the tracks are down, it's 3:30, and the traffic is backed, the traffic, we know, is backed up to that intersection going west. So with this scenario, with the bump out, with the right turn only, and that, somebody wanting to turn left who's in that lane, instead of, he wants to go east, the first ward, it just bottlenecks the whole town. So the bump outs, though, safety-wise, is, is really the direction to go, and we should go, and maybe that's the right direction on Westminster. At Deer Path, I think creates such a bottleneck that it's going to be a disaster, especially with those of us who've been here for so long, you can kinda work your way around.
Those of us who've been there so long, don't use Deer Path, we go over to Illinois.
That's right. That's right over here.
That's true.
So I think, I think a lot of these things can be worked out, I think in a committee...
That's where I would recommend that it work out.
Yeah, and, and then, I just need to ask the question, who's on this, this, that committee we were just...
The focus group?
The focus group, because if it's you and, you know, two other...
Because this is like an aesthetic committee, so I don't get involved with it at all.
It's in the book. But, yeah. It's listed anywhere. You got CPA, you got Plant Commission. You got Garden Club.
But I think, uh, let me just follow up, I think, on Alderman Swarthouth's point. We hear what you're saying, working with a consultant, we'll go back and take a look at those bump outs and the, and the way they affect the, uh, the traffic at those intersections, because you're absolutely right. We have to be very concerned right now, as you say, 3:30, it's backed up in front of City Hall from, uh, Western.
It's, it's backed up to Whiggin Road.
It goes to Western Avenue, yeah.
Yeah, we've gotta be very cognizant of that, so we'll take a look at that.
Okay. My final little comment on this is then the loop-de-loo in front of Market Square here. I, I just, you know, that just doesn't do it for me.
Well, we brought, uh, the last time we brought...
Forgetting a benefit of two drop-off spots on the east, on the west side of the train station, which in fact, you know, most of the drop-off occurs on the east side, and, uh, you know, I don't know.
We're a loop-de-loo expert, please.
That doesn't do much.
Where is the loop-de-loo?
Moving that road in there with a, it's, it's difficult enough, there's so many turns coming in there to have angled, whatever you call it.
Angle in there?
I, I can explain to you what came out of the focus group meeting from the...
Where is the loop-de-loo?
This little, a little...
By the fountain.
By the fountain, they've done, they've put a little loop, little dip in the road.
I kinda like it now.
I like it the way it is, you know, it's pretty straightforward, and it's, uh, well, I mean, the, the design is a straight road, and to, to, to use, to put this turn in there, as subtle as it might be, doesn't really do it for me. It's an aesthetic comment, by the way.
Okay, let me, let me just explain, uh, from the two options that we had shown at the last meeting.
All right.
Uh, right after that, we had the focus group discussion, and through that discussion, we've narrowed it down to this one, um, option, which was a preferred option out of that discussion. Clearly, uh, you know, if you, if you would like to choose to, to keep it as it is today, that is also an option. But what we're showing here is that the centerpiece at Market Square is not changing at all. That's exactly what exists today, the dash lines, and what's here is what is there today. Um, the curb line that's here today pretty much comes straight along here, and then comes right in around here. So we are adding this, this bump, um, on the Western Avenue side. The main reason why, um, we're, we're wanting to do that is to shorten these crosswalk situations, um, uh, east and west. Uh, the crosswalks right now are approximately 50 to 60 feet long, um, and because this is pretty wide open, um, it's, it's a pretty long stretch to get across as a pedestrian, and traffic tends to kinda go every which way in the, in this area with the width of the pavement that's there. The, the reason why we're doing this, this little bump, and you, and what's shown here, we potentially could soften and make a little bit more smooth, but what we're really trying to do is get, you know, a, a minimum amount of pedestrian sidewalk on this side, um, at the train station, um, so, so people can get off the train and circulate along here without being in the roadway. That's really the main motivation for how this...
Oh, if there's a sidewalk, it's fine. I thought the write-up said that it was a drop-off area. Maybe I read it wrong.
Well, that's, that's what happened as part of the focus group meeting, is that, um, we, we, one of the previous options showed a drop-off area, dedicated drop-off area in this zone. We've, we've taken that out, but what we are showing here is that this pavement from this edge to this edge is, is wide enough for a car to be stopped here, a car to go past, a car to be stopped here, and a car to go past, so it's essentially four lanes wide with no parking, um, dedicated parking in this zone. So this is still very much a, a wide-open area, and as part of that focus group discussion, uh, this is what was recommended, uh, because of the fact that regardless of whether we want people to stop here or not, cars do stop here to, for people to come out and get in the car, and they wanted to make sure we weren't blocking traffic here, and then also the idea that even though we don't stripe this off as a, as a loading area over here, um, I think they recognize that FedEx trucks and other things stop here on a fairly regular basis, and they didn't wanna give up the ability to do that. So that came out of the focus group discussion. So what's here really that differs from today is that this is angled enough to get a sidewalk and a little bit of planting in here, which is different than today, and these bumps are different than today, but this configuration, this configuration, and this are all the same as what's...
But don't the bumps on, uh, Western Avenue really just go to the, what would be the back end of the cars that are parking in there a 50-degree anyways?
Correct. The, the parking stall is here, it's kinda hard to see on this graphic, but, and then the bump just goes right to the back of the car.
Okay.
It's not any wider than that. This is, um, uh, I don't know the exact dimensions, John, you might remember, or Lance, but this is wider than two typical lanes, um, and, and that's where, I think John mentioned before, as we look at some of the geometry and how these bump outs really work, there may be situations where we, where we need to clearly do two distinct lanes, that are, say, two 11- or 12-foot wide lanes, so you got a dedicated right turn, dedicated through and left, that sort of thing. But we, we do quite a few streetscapes where we're trying to find that balance between pedestrian, safety, and amenity, and roadway traffic, and making sure it flows, and quite often the best solution is doing a lane that is, you know, one, one lane that's maybe 16 feet wide. So, so if someone did stop here to pick someone up, you can still get passed, but you're not making it a full 22 or 24 feet wide, and that compromise seems to work pretty well in a lot of situations.
No, I, I would agree with that. That was my comment on the, the other bump outs earlier, was I was afraid we were compromising some of that, what I would call more casual or informal way of, of moving the traffic through.
Can I ask a safety question? Just someone educate me. I thought the accidents that we had on Western Avenue were more of people going east-west on Western, not necessarily at the intersection. Is, is that correct, or are we having problems at the intersections as well? I mean, like, from Don's, people that were walking across, and, and then we're having problems there. Are we also having people getting hit at the intersections?
Just almost. Just almost.
Just almost?
Almost.
Well, I would definitely say the, um, certainly the fatalities and the, and the more serious accidents are people crossing, if you will, mid-block to get to the parking on the, uh, east side of Western Avenue. We do have the problems, and someone, I think it was Alderman Grumhouse said before, where someone is approaching the intersection, and you've got a lot of things going on with the cars, and, uh, we have gotten a lot of complaints, but knock on wood, we haven't had any injuries.
This is a dangerous crosswalk. I mean, it's a lot of, there's a lot of real estate to come.
Oh, I, I know that one, but I, I was thinking about Deer Path, and we're talking about the bump outs and, you know, the cars backing up.
Right.
Okay. You know, the only thing with the drop-off on the east side there is to make sure when they open up their big door, because if you're close to the train station, it's raised, and you, so you can't get the door open. So they tend, you got three feet for the door plus two feet to get by, you're gonna be sitting six feet out into the street to drop somebody off. So just, just a thought on that end.
Sure, and that's something that this, you know, this misalignment of the geometry here, this, this curve helps us to deal with that situation as well. That's the, that was...
Yeah, I mean, they just can't pull up close there, because you're letting people out on the right.
Okay. Bob, I'm gonna ask you to go back to financial strategies, because that's the next thing on the list.
Right. Well, let me, um, have, uh, our director of finance, Kathy Reiterson, come forward, because I think there were some questions at the last meeting too, about, uh, the financing of this, and, uh, she's put together some charts here that basically show where our current debt capacity is, and where our future debt capacity is, and the options that are available to the council.
Thank you. Uh, yes, on this graph, we have three lines. Uh, the first, which is the pink line, represents the city's, uh, current debt service, and as you can see by 2000, it is ending in 2013, so if we issued no debt, um, from this point, from today on, uh, we would have, uh, no debt on the tax levy by 2013. The yellow line represents, um, the projected debt service with the issues that we know we are going to do. This includes the $8 million for the MS facility that we are preparing to do, um, with the This includes the $8 million for the MS facility that we are preparing to do, um, with the sale date in March. Um, the 1.75 million for Route 60 that we also plan on doing in March. Uh, the calling in of the debt, um, that is on the current MS land in 2009 and then subsequently reissuing that amount. And then for planning purposes, a $2 million issue for Route 60. So you can see that that would then create this debt service.
Kathy, can I just stop you for a second?
Yes.
Does that include our reissue of the debt that is up, that we're issuing this year, the 7 million?
Yes, this includes 8 million. It'll be 8 million for, uh, the MS building. This line here represents what our current debt service is. So you can see that even by doing, um, the debt service that I just talked about, we still have a capacity, which is this gap here of 15.8 million dollars, um, that we can issue for other projects without exceeding the current, uh, debt service extension, which is on the residence tax bill. The other two charts that I have are just a lot of numbers that back up the charts, uh, that we just talked about. So if anybody wants to discuss any of the individual numbers or has any questions, I'd be happy to do that. Yes.
While Kathy is here, I might just have her walk through in your packet of materials, I believe. Uh, and again, this goes back to the, uh, calendar. There we go. Is, uh, the importance of sort of over the course of the next three years, a couple of the critical decisions, just so that you can get comfortable with the fact that you still have considerable amount of time with some of the things that are coming forward before you actually have to make some decisions on the debt issuance. So why don't you walk them through this one too?
Yes, you can see the first item in regard to debt issuance is that we are planning a March 17th bond sale. We will be coming back at the next finance committee to talk about the structure, um, of that bond sale. It's currently in your packets, uh, the recommended structure, but we can review it again, um, at the next meeting. Uh, the next, as far as financing goes, would be the, um, August of 2009, calling the existing Laurel Avenue, uh, debt, which is, will be outstanding at that point in time for 2.5 million. Um, then we do, would not have anything until, uh, the year 2010. And that is if we would like to issue additional debt, um, for the Western Avenue project. In the schedules that you have in your packet, we planned on issuing it in 2009, but here we're showing it 2010. So that gives us an extra year, um, to wait for the debt service for that to be appearing on our schedules. So you can see that really the, the crucial part we're looking at right now will take place, um, at the next meeting. And then we have more than a year, um, till any other debt issues occur. Any questions in regard to that?
I think the thought that I would leave the council with is, and Kathy, I think has done a great job laying this out, is that, um, you know, basically the 15.8 million of extra capacity that's shown here takes our debt capacity through the year 2027. So it sort of goes out about, you know, it goes out 20 years, uh, 19 years. And that's the debt capacity that the city has to use, you know, over the course of that time, um, for any other projects that may or may come out. And now obviously, we're not gonna go out and put together a, a CIP program that goes out for 19 years. So we have to be a little bit forward thinking about how much do we wanna leave in reserve and, and, um, you know, are there any big, really big ticket items down the road? Um, you know, clearly the, the town is one of the most, the, the, this town and then, and how it looks is one of the most important items we face. So, you know, from that perspective, using the money, using some of that capacity, um, on this makes a lot of sense. Um, but it's, you know, at the same time, we obviously wanna leave some capacity out there for, you know, future things that are gonna come up over the next 10 or 15 years. So.
Any other questions?
David, can you give a, um, for Kathy a, you know, looking at, to your point, David, which I think is a good one. Sometimes you let history be your guide about what the future brings and how much you in fact need to invest. And at what rate have we been investing?
Kathy?
Versus.
It's always a tough trade-off because, you know, when we face big capital expenditures, we have two ways we can do it. We can either do it out of current income, um, and that current income has been greatly enhanced by our, our passage of the real estate transfer tax. I mean, that's giving us another, um, you know, one and a half to $2 million a year to be spending on capital improvements, money we didn't have, you know, two years ago. Um, so looking at history is a little, um, uh, we're, we're clearly gonna do better going forward than we, we've done in the past. Um, and then, you know, it's just the sort of the, the legacy of the town and, and the projects we face and the projects, you know, we might face going forward. I mean, we had the beach, obviously, and that's all, um, come off at this point. Um, but it's big projects like that that you have to think about.
But I think those big projects, again, just like the beach or like the MS land, you would go to the population and ask them if they wanted to have that project. I think that was the whole focus out of that, uh, uh, group that we had before that looked at all these finances. That you're not gonna just take this discretionary and use that. This is really what we need to keep ourselves at the level we're at. And I'm not suggesting certainly we spend it all, but, uh, you know.
And it's important to say that that 15, that 15.8 million is only to keep us at the 2000, the tax levy that we had when we passed the real estate transfer tax, where we made a pledge to the citizens that we would not take the tax levy past that number. Um, you know, certainly the city has a lot more borrowing capacity for that.
Correct.
Just to, even to stay at AAA, we have a lot more borrowing capacity than that. So it's, um, you know, we certainly, for a big project or, you know, if there was a big emergency item or something we wanted to do, we could certainly go back to the citizens and, and ask to increase the levy.
So.
So. Okay.
Let me, okay, uh, other questions? Is there anything that we, we haven't answered, uh, anything that you're unclear about this evening? Because this will be coming back at a future council meeting for official action to, uh, award, uh, the phase two engineering to really begin to put together the, the nuts and bolts, if you will. And as I said earlier, that this will roughly take us through the end of this year.
But as I understand, even if we're gonna award the phase two engineering, it's really engineering for the stuff that we have to do anyway. We're not engineering pie in the sky. We're engineering the things that we need to have done according to staff and according to what we've heard for the last 10 years.
Well.
But we're gonna keep some options open, is what I think we're doing. We're gonna, we're gonna do the basic infrastructure, plus we're gonna, I don't know if it's engineering or it's. It's preparing the bid documents to be able to, when we go out to bid, that if we wanna do a couple of the different options, we can do them.
Correct. But I'm just saying, the basic engineering is the basic engineering. Sewers are sewers, those we gotta put in.
Right. But let me, just so I'm clear, cause I thought I heard two different things. Uh, that, uh, in your packet, uh, for this evening, we had what we called the high priority of 6.9 million dollars. Um, we've also heard this evening that, uh, yes, go ahead and do alternative bids for the pavers. So we have that. I also heard this evening about the, uh, crosswalks at, uh, Illinois and, uh, Western. And I'm just a little unclear about what I'll call the medium priority streetscapes, because I was talking about sizing it down and then I heard no, go from Vine to Laurel. And is this one of those alternates that you want to see bid out? I'm just trying to get the gray area defined.
I think so. I think we should have that all available.
I don't know if we really have that clear picture of exactly what it is that's going in.
Yeah. No, we can, we can definitely do that. And, and then again, as you, those numbers come back, you can say, you know, we'd love to do this whole area, but it's way outside the budget. Let's just do this to this.
And I think we need to begin to have conversations with businesses and landlords about all this stuff.
I, any, uh, my, my view would be is anything that was presented other than high priority, meaning medium and the low priority, would be discussion items with additional stakeholders. That was my sense. Including brick pavers, including, uh, better planters, including all that.
Okay, but.
That, that's my point of view. That's why I'm only one person.
I guess maybe I have a question for either Ramish or the consultants, that the conversations with the business owners, and we should probably talk about structurally how we're going to approach them, is going to occur over the course of the next three to six months or something. We obviously have to do the engineering in the meantime, so I'm assuming that we're gonna have to authorize this engineering work to continue even while these conversations are going on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would assume a lot of the, though this is not engineering. I mean, there might be a little bit of engineering, mostly engineering is gonna be doing sewers and stuff like that.
That's what I was trying to make. Thank you for eloquently finishing. But we already said, quote, that is an option.
Right.
But on the sidewalk, these raised, uh, planters and those things, I just wanna be clear, what are we telling the consultants? So you tell me what you need.
That's the gray area when it comes to design. Um, if we could get a little bit more clarification on the, the medium priority, I think that would help us in the design process from the standpoint that, um, when it is designed and the number and the, the location of the, the tree breaks and things of that nature, um, it really is, we're gonna take a different approach if you want us to go with the, um, high priority versus the medium priority in the design process.
And these are all really in the sidewalk area and adjacent. They're outside of the infrastructure engineering. We're all in agreement on that. That's where I guess I'm coming back to.
Do we have three months to figure that out? Or do, do we need that now for engineering?
Well, let me ask you, could you do the other engineering for the infrastructure for three months and then in three months, we'll come back and give you a decision on the medium priority?
I would sure like to see a, a section, a cross-section design of the, the raised planters and the meetings. I, you know, I think, keep it simple because, you know, I know the kind of design I think there would be, I think we'd all be more comfortable with.
I'd also like to see an initial meeting of the stakeholders to see if they have any interest whatsoever.
If they say no.
Well, they need to, you know, they'll need to see, hey, what's that, what am I getting?
And the cost that we're.
As a matter of economics, as the amount of space that we want to cover goes up, what we can afford to put in in terms of density and, you know, level, is probably gonna have to go down if we wanna maintain a budget.
And I, the only thing maybe I'll throw in here is a little, uh, scoping issue. I know we've had some discussion about geography here and how much, where it goes from where to where. Um, and, you know, I think it would be, may be helpful for us as a council to say, yeah, I think we would all agree where, where it starts. It starts at Market Square and I probably don't think there's any debate about that. And I think we would all probably agree it goes to Deer Path and then we'd all probably agree it goes to Westminster. But I think after that, we may get into disagreement about where it goes and where it doesn't go. So, you know, we might be able to bite off and say, build into some design right now Westminster to, at least I'll puffer that up. Westminster to Deer Path, cause that's clear and it's a, it's equal geometry. To me, that's one street this way and one street that way. It's easy for me to figure out. Um, that might be one way to look at the geography. And then everything else would be next, one north, one south.
But your planters are gonna be basically the same unit, isn't, we're gonna try and make them the same so it's uniform? So you're gonna know the cost to do a planter?
Correct. I, I think, um, I think part of what we need to do is get to a point where, um, where we can start to identify, um, how much of this we can get for a budget amount. And we have to do more design work or do that.
Right.
So, um, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to figure out right now is right now, for what we're under contract for, we're actually getting kinda close to the end point with a sort of a schematic level understanding. Um, what we're gonna be moving forward into is, is really understanding, okay, from back of that curb to the building face or the right-of-way line, we really need to look closely at what we, what we're really working with there. Um, light placement, uh, spacing, um, which is a given. So that'll be worked through, um, where the existing trees are, which ones, uh, we're, we're definitely going to be saving, which ones, uh, may, may need to be removed because of all those improvements. So I think from a, from a streetscape standpoint, in trying to figure out where those planters specifically would go, when you get to the level of detail that I think you're, you're looking for, um, we need to do a lot of that as, as the engineering is, is moving forward. Um, so I, I think just purely from a, uh, the most efficient way to get through that, I, I think if we have a sense that, um, uh, doing some more of these enhancements or some of these raised planters and those sorts of things is, is within the realm of possibility, um, if you look at that while we're going through the engineering process, it's gonna be the most efficient way to, to, to make those decisions. As far as the question about what they would be in the cross-section of, of, um, what, what we're thinking, um, in the previous presentation, in the, in summary document, I think we feel pretty comfortable, Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, but having, uh, gone through the two public open houses and working with the staff in, in that meeting, going through the focus group discussion, um, we've actually spent a lot of time on that component. Um, it's really just a matter of how much of it really is, is gonna be important, if any of it at all, to include in, in the project. So, um, you know, that, uh, I think we feel fairly comfortable with, comfortable with that. It's more just a matter of how much of the budget bear, um, in order to, to move that.
And, and I think the two Toms have answered the question. Uh, this one, Tom, this Tom says, hey, we gotta have more to show somebody. We don't have enough. And this one says, hey, we know we're gonna do at least the first block out, so you can engineer it, tell us what it's gonna look like and cost, and then we'll have a better idea to go back to the world and say, okay, here's where we're starting from. Now, we wish to expand it to here, but we need some buy-in from the private sector. Are you interested? They say no or yes, based off of what we're seeing. I don't think bringing them this is going to get them all excited or have them figure out the concept of what it is they have and what it is they're buying into and what it is that eventually they'll look like.
Can I maybe offer?
Specifically, I know that the, the former, the, the president that, who ran the Harris operations in downtown Lake Forest, the bump out you're talking about, he was willing to move forward and pay for a bump out on the opposite side of B of A space.
Right.
To reflect that. He knows what that, the, that bump out looks like. He's, he'll buy into that. You go down the street, will Don pay for a bump out? Will Jewel pay for a bump out? I think all those businesses would say, yeah, there's some real worth there. I got a bench. My, my, my customers can sit there, wait for a pickup or I can, you know. Those are things they can see and I think that's, those.
But we haven't had that dialogue yet.
Right.
That's, and that's what need, I, I would feel.
Do you have that dialogue?
I don't.
We, we do. We need more to show them.
Okay, well then I'd, let's approve a little additional work for them to do some more schematics.
Right.
On engineering. I mean, that can be done. That's not, that's a, uh, an investment that we can make to.
Absolutely.
If we feel that that's something to go ahead, then change your contract.
And I think, we will come back.
Give more money.
Give more money.
Well, can I make a suggestion? I think, uh, the Public Works Committee is meeting again two weeks?
Oh, I can't wait. No, I, I know we are.
Yeah. Well, why don't we have, why don't we see if we can get a, a draft, uh, schematic, uh, to the Public Works Committee in two weeks? Cause I think there was an issue too about whether or not the, what came out of the focus group was a little over the top for some people. And I think we gotta look at those. We'll try and scale those back, see what they come back with. And then you'll have something that you can then take to those businesses and we can go from there.
I got one other quickie. I wanna just, cost on this. Um, we've gone through a couple of these large budgeting processes and the costs seem to always come out a little bit higher than what's been budgeted. How, how comfortable are we? We've taken into the fact that oil's at $90. Have we taken in the fact that all commodity prices have gone up, um, that labor is expensive? Do we feel pretty good that these cost estimates are in line or are we gonna get through the engineering on this and find out that it's not, you know, $10 million, it's $15 million?
I think, uh, as we do the phase two, I think, you know, we'll, we'll get a much better idea of, at least the details of what it is now as far, if I could tell the price, I don't understand it.
But we're betting at today's $90 oil, right? We're not assuming oil's going back to 75.
Right, no. The prices do reflect, uh, what we, based on current, for budget, like, you know, what we got to pitch this year, right? Being always based on, uh, prices, we get this.
I think what Alderman.
The answer is a definite maybe.
What Alderman, uh, Grumhaus is hoping for is, uh, when I used to have a lot of engineers designing projects for me, they always came in and they came in under budget. And it was such a wonderful thing to be able to come and present to the board. And I think that's what David is hoping for, is that you come in and, and present something and bring in the bids and go, guess what? We just saved a million bucks.
David still believes it's Santa Claus, if you please.
I know Ken is in charge of that department.
All right.
Well, Ramish, let me see if I can put you guys on the spot. I think, uh, you guys are very confident with your number of the high priority infrastructure. And that it's really then gonna come down to how much of that medium priority stuff ends up getting in there is what could fluctuate that, that price. But ultimately, you'll have that information. You can make that decision.
Okay.
You might wanna expand your focus group too, a little bit to.
Get a lot of garden club.
There's a lot of garden club on there and then you have people from the, you know, review committees in town. But I, you might wanna extend it to a couple of landowners who you're gonna be talking about paying for it. So it's easy to be, you know, love flowers and say, okay, we're gonna put planters up every block. I think that's great, but who's gonna pay for it, you know?
Actually, I think they took the opposite approach. They said it should be minimal maintenance.
Minimal maintenance, but still it's the cost of the planters that go in, so.
Right. You know, we'll take a look at it.
So that, that's my only thought with that. You might want, if we're gonna be asking people to kick in, we might wanna talk to a few of those people and put them on that might be ones to kick in.
Maybe we can get Mary involved. She seems to get the garden club to pay for a park.
Okay. Well, I think we know where we're headed and, uh, now, the only question I guess I would throw back at you is you ultimately need to decide how you wanna approach these businesses along there, whether you wanna have a committee of the council. Uh, do you want the staff to call them in? So give some thought to that and, uh, that's a decision for a future date.
I think that has to be counsel to, uh, the businesses, not staff to the business. I think that's appropriate place to go. And we'll figure that out. Tom, you're in charge. Tom, you're in charge. Okay. Anything else on the agenda for this evening? This is an opportunity for any public comment, if I have any. Hearing none, can I turn it back here for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Committee, whole meeting is adjourned.